Fourteen Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have a quorum of members present. I'd like to call the meeting to order. To begin the meeting, I'd like to introduce a fifth grade student from Winter Street Elementary, Alexis Rossidge. She will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll follow that with a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You did a great job. Would you like to introduce the guests you brought with you today?
I brought my mom and my principal, Mrs. Hanks.
Great, and tell us about yourself. What's your favorite subject at school?
I love math.
You love math. I love math. And what else do you like to do when you're not at school?
I like to run, draw, and drive my sister crazy.
In that order? Well, that's great. Anything else we should know about Alexis? Well, thank you and thank you to the principal and thanks to your mom for bringing the start to me. Introduction of other guests. There's one guest I'd like to introduce, Amanda Crable, our former student member of the board is here today. Any other board members? We can give her a round of applause. Any other guests that board members would like to introduce? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move for approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting, May the 20th.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, would you like to amend the agenda? We have two amendments to offer.
Do you want to offer them together as one block amendment or separate? Either way, it's fine.
Probably separate.
Okay.
It's just that way in case there's any discussion. To move Delegate Seraphini from the report on the second page up to the just after public comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, the question's on Mrs. Breitman's amendment to the agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero and the student concurs. That brings us back to the original motion.
A second amendment, Mr. President, to sever the policy consent agenda item under new business and it would be number three, Breitman, three separate discussions, three separate items.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mrs. Williams?
I just want to make sure that I'm clear. We're looking at number three, dealing with policies, am I correct? And we want to discuss those three separately.
All three separately instead of the new business.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, item three in a new business will now become three separate items for consideration rather than one item that would be voted on as a block. Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. That brings us back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the question's on approval of the agenda as amended. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next is approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of minutes from our closed session held on Tuesday, May the 6th, 2014, and also the minutes from the business meeting held on the same day.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero and the student member concurs. That brings us to public comment. We have two individuals who signed up to speak. First is Melinda Marston. Welcome, Mrs. Marston. Nice to have you here.
Does it matter where I sit?
A place you feel comfortable.
Thank you. I'm Mindy Marston. I'm a candidate for a seat on the Board of the Washington County Historical, Washington County Board of Education. Been there, done that. President Harding's, other board members, Dr. Wilcox, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address this group. I've been hearing a lot recently about the problem of bullying in the schools. These questions are usually posed on the manner that assumes that this is a school problem. As a friend reminded me yesterday, the community's problems land on the school board's, school's steps every day. I think this question needs to be addressed as how can the school system partner with other community agencies and organizations to address bullying and its root causes? Bullying is only one result of larger problems which include, but are not limited to, poverty, neglect, and abuse. I believe that the only way to address these problems is through a coalition of all the organizations that serve our youth to address these issues in a coordinated way. The public schools need to be active in this effort but cannot be expected to solve this problem on its own. This is not an isolated problem, but a complex network of problems that need a comprehensive approach to finding ways to improve the situation. The United Way and the Community Foundation are encouraging agencies to work together to approach major problems in a coordinated way. I believe that the effort to attack the underlying causes of bullying would fall under the school board's role of advocating for the needs of all students at local, state, and national levels, and that individual school board members should take a leadership role in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marston. Is there any brief response to Mrs. Marston's comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate hearing from her. Next individual signed up to speak is Peter Perini. Welcome, Mr. Perini. Nice to have you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Harding's, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. My name is Peter Perini and I am a candidate for the Washington County Board of Education. And this evening, I'd like to speak just briefly on college and career readiness. But if I may, before I do, I'd like to just quickly give my congratulations to a friend of mine, Brian Poffenberger, who has been tapped to be the head of the Maryland State Chamber and is leaving the Washington County Hakers Town Chamber of Commerce. He'll do a great job and the chamber's been a good supporter of Washington County public schools and a good team partner in helping enhance our school system. So I give Brian my congratulations. As I mentioned, I'd like to speak about college and career readiness as graduation is only a few weeks away. First, congratulations to those seniors who are about to graduate. Thank you to their teachers who worked hard with them for 12 or 13 years to get them to where they are today, and to the support personnel and administrators and supervisors, all of whom make up the learning experience. It's important for students to have a life path. Maybe that's to go on to a two- or four-year college, maybe that's to enter the military, maybe that's to enter the workforce. No matter what, the students need to be prepared academically, emotionally, fiscally, and there needs to be a plan. I give a lot of credit to the counselors in the high schools, but there is more that can be done. I think it's important to begin the discussion with students and their parents about college opportunities much earlier. Maybe create a more formal process to help families, especially those who have not yet had children in college, understand what's ahead of them. I know when the first of our three children was preparing to apply and go into the college process, we really didn't understand everything that needed to be done. Fortunately, we found a mentor to work with us and help us understand, not only in college selection, but also to understand the fiscal requirements and the opportunities that are out there. And finally, there are some important community programs that are kind of growing up in the grassroots, and I know the school system supports those and it's been, have very positive outcome. The first that I'll mention is FAFSA Frenzy, a great program that has helped a lot of kids, a lot of families, understanding, understand how to complete the FAFSA forms and make sure that they're getting all the financial opportunities that they can. The second is a program called Program Promise, which I personally think is a great idea. That is to ensure that every Washington County student who graduates from high school in Washington County can obtain at least an associate's degree regardless of their ability to afford college. As I said, there are many different paths. College is one of those, and I think that there's been some great strides recently in helping with college and career readiness, but I also believe that there's a lot of work that can be done. Washington County has some really incredible students and I'd just like to make sure that we give them every opportunity we can. So thank you very much and thank you for all you've done so far.
Thank you, Mr. Perini. Any brief comments to Mr. Perini? I want to thank you for mentioning the chamber as well. I know they're throwing an event tonight to recognize Mr. Poffenberger as he leaves Washington County and heads for the State Chamber. Unfortunately, we have a meeting tonight, so there won't be much representation from the school system, but your comments give me the opportunity to say that Brian has been a great friend to education and the chamber has been a great friend to education, as has the business community more generally. So thank you for recognizing that and reminding us of all of what he's done for Washington County Education.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, those are the only individuals who've signed up to speak. Is there anybody else here who'd like the opportunity to speak? Okay, we'll move on. Next item on the amended agenda is Delegate Seraphini. We're pleased to have Delegate Seraphini, the Chair of the Washington County delegation, come to share with us his perspective on the legislative section that just passed and maybe give us a preview of maybe coming attractions next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for making time to do this with us.
No problem. It's my pleasure and to Dr. Harding's, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, thank you very much. I am here tonight as the Chairman of the delegation from Washington County. I'm also a member of the Education Subcommittee on Ways and Means, which is another reason why I'm here. And I do want to say upfront, I'm not a candidate for the Board of Education. Although I am a candidate, but I'm not sure I would want your job. I'm quite certain I wouldn't. So I want to say right up front, thank you very much. You all have instituted the rapid response team and it is very well put together and it helps me tremendously. We deal with 2,500 bills on our side, possibly, and the Senate gets about that many too. It is impossible for us to keep on top of those and more importantly, the education ones. So specifically to Mrs. Breitman, I appreciate your contact with Mabe. John Woolham's is an amazing person and he's very well respected and it helps us tremendously because as you all found out over the years, not everything is what it seems on the face a lot of times. So we appreciate that help, Dr. Harding's and Dr. Wilcox, Mr. Trotta and Mrs. Cade, really very, very helpful. I can't tell you, it's instrumental to be able to have them say, listen, we dug down through this, we looked at this. You know, you need a historian and Mrs. Cade is fabulous that way to say, we tried this 30 years ago and here's why it didn't work. So I have to say, that is very, at least for me on the Education Subcommittee, Mr. Myers was gracious enough to not only resign from that committee but suggest me for it, which it is one of the hardest working and covers a lot of content. So I have a great relationship with Delegate Kaiser, who's the Chair, but I need your help and it's been tremendous. So I want to say thank you all to that very much. I am known as Dr. Doom and Gloom, so I want to continue with that as always and tell you that, you know, fiscal issues for us are still going to be out there. Twenty-eight states were able to show actually surpluses. Unfortunately, we don't. We still have a structural deficit and I don't know if you've seen, but in the Baltimore Business Journal, our comptroller has said that the revenue write-down could be pretty bad in the fall, which concerns us. We had hopes to do a lot of positive things after some tough times. We had revenue write-down of $238 million in the spring and he wouldn't release exact details, but he did say some of the preliminary numbers do not look real exciting. So I would love to have served at a time when we were flush with money. It hasn't happened in my six years, but I'm still concerned about that and what does that mean? You should know that last year, our revenues only grew by 1% and the projection was in the next fiscal year, they'd grow by five. And now, when he's talking about revenue write-downs, that does concern me some. So I think that's something that we need to keep in mind as we head to the future and how we're going to get there. We are going to have a new governor and their approach would be something that would be interesting to see. Usually, if you're going to make tough decisions, you're going to make them early. The concern that we have, and once again, Mrs. Breitman and the leadership, you all know, we're concerned about funding formulas. We really are concerned. We know that they've had to make some adjustments for Garrett. They've seen that those formulas, they're due. You know, I saw, fortunately, Mrs. Cade sent me her, you know, she talked about Thornton too and the conversation she had with you. We need to watch that. We need to have representation. I have to say, and you know, I'm not here to stroke everybody's ego, but you, this board has representation in Annapolis, very well respected. Once again, your role with Mabe is powerful. Dr. Harding's and Dr. Wilcox are recognized, they're respected. We know that Dr. Lowry really looks to them, not only for the technology things that we've brought to them, but just as a group that's fiscally sound and prudent, and yet when you look at the makeup of the farm students and the issues we're dealing with here. You know, I find it interesting, we had a discussion even Sunday about how many people have come from out of areas to receive services here? You know, homeless, those in need. A good friend of mine is one of your PPWs and she relates to me quite often, you know, the difficulties. But people see Washington County's a place to go and get services, and once again, as was said, they drop on your door as well. So I think we're seen as a compassionate community that cares. Boy, we're getting overloaded and I know you are as well. So I'm concerned about the recognition from the state for funding. I'm not going to go too far in legislative. You saw the things, the things that concern me, probably the same ones that concern you. You know, prevailing wage on construction does concern me a little bit about what that's going to do for us. You know, Common Core was the hot button and it was interesting, it was bipartisan opposition almost, you could say. But it was very interesting for, you know, traditional conservatives and liberals and unions and non-union people to all come together and say, we have concerns. I think once again, the tenor and tone that was taken from this board and from this school system was very powerful to say, we're not afraid of saying, we've got to step this up. We want to push ourselves, we want to set the bar high, respecting what's been done in the past. Implementation, as everyone said, is going to be the key in how we get there and still remains to be seen. So, you know, I just want you to know, hopefully you all understand, I'm listening. I do need to clarify, yes, my children did go to private school, but they also did go to public school and my daughter was on the volleyball team at North High that won two state championships. I've in my last 30 years worked with probably 400 or 500 teachers and administrative and support staff. I hear, I hear things that you probably want to know because they'll talk to me about their concerns. We have great, great teacher, support staff and administration in this county and I understand the concerns and challenges they have. And I think it's been helpful for me to be able to relate that back. You know, my wife is a teacher, my daughter is a teacher, my daughter-in-law is a counselor and I can't get away from them, they're just everywhere. So, but I appreciate what we've tried to do, what you all have tried to do with Common Core and that, you know, we're not done yet. What do we do about the various testing and we have issues? So I'm always helpful to hear that. The discipline issue that's coming down from the state, I obviously have concerns. You all know best what to do. And when I said early in the session, one of the state board members were there, said I, sir, he just, he happened to ask me what I did, the wrong question in the lunch line. So, well, sir, that's interesting. I represent Washington County, I'm a legislator and I'm very concerned about what you're doing. We know how to handle it. We do a great job and we face the challenges we always have with care and compassion. So I trust you in that, I will do whatever I can to help you as far as that goes for. Moving just to other issues, we had a meeting last night with, last week with Volvo, it was very powerful, Landisianetic Volvo Manufacturing, and they were talking about the need to replace the things that they need. And they're excited about the robotic things because, you know, Wade Watson, he said, you know, I don't know that I need a guy to turn a lug knot in a couple of years, but I need someone that can run that robot that's going to do that. So I salute what you guys are doing there, understanding technology. It's exciting. If you watch the commercial for Pittsburgh Institute of Aeronautics, right, it says robotics is one of the things going to happen there. So I think we're on the cutting edge, the things you're pushing for technology-wise, I think are going to be great for our children and our kids. And as Mr. Perini said, college and career, whatever it is, we've got a lot of that going on, so we're excited about that. So I think one of the other changes, or challenges we're going to see in the future, you know, it was interesting, I appreciate your moment of silence. Before that, we had the Supreme Court decision that related around Carroll County. How will that impact you all? What do we do about the faith component of our students and families as that interacts with their education thing? And I think when I talk to teachers and stuff, it's always very gray. I'm on a religious freedom group that we have Sikhs, we have Muslims, we have Jewish individuals, we have faith, people of all faiths. It is to say, there is great balance in our country and I think it's going to continue to come. So I would say that we're going to clearly try to work with you on that because I think it is an issue for us and I think we as a county have done a great job in the past. And so finally, before I'll take any questions, I do want to say once again, congratulations specifically to Dr. Wilcox. I think it's awesome that he's been recognized for some of the things that he's done and, you know, we're very fortunate to have him and he got all these awards. Did I say that the way I was supposed to? Is that how you wrote it or did I?
I wrote it.
You wrote it, that's what I'm saying. Did I say that right? Yeah, okay. No. I think we're blessed, you know, we are blessed. We have good people that are recognized well and specifically, I couldn't get out of here without giving him a little bit of grief, which I'm sure will come back at some point in the future. So thank you all. If you have any questions, I was told it's evening, people want to go home, so let me get out of here, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of them.
Thank you for coming. We, I need to, you need to come back to every meeting.
Oh, no.
It's rare that people say so many good things about us. We appreciate that. Are there questions from board members?
I'd like to put a couple out if that's all right. Not to keep you very long, but if we're looking at negative revenue projections, and I'm not questioning that possibility or inevitability, how do you think that would handle the Thornton discussion? Because that's all about adequacy and equity and you can't have the Thornton discussion if you're not willing to pay the bill. Do you see that slowing down the process? Do you see it just moving forward with the possibility of delay in funding? How do you, how are you reading the tea leaves?
Yeah, that's, and please understand, you know, I'm waiting for the turn to come. I'm waiting for it. But, you know, there's been tax law changes and stuff like that, so that's what Comptroller Francho is saying. This is just the effects of some federal provisions and stuff. It's not, you know, sequestration, it's just tax policies where people were concerned about tax rates getting higher in 14, so they moved a lot of taxes into 13. Well, that gave us a false sense, not only here but nationally, that there was all this extra revenue. Well, they moved things up to pay taxes on them in 13 at a lower, what they suspected would be a lower rate, in fact, it was. So it gave us a false up. It's like computer sales. We had Y2K concerns, everybody brought a brand-new computer in '99 because they wanted to be Y2K compliant, right? Well, that was great in '99, but 2000 through 2002, I don't need a computer, I already bought one. So you've got a convergence, almost the perfect storm. I didn't talk about it, but school construction, right? The governor has put this group out there. We're obviously very concerned about there. What you guys have done is innovative in the state. It took me about two months of explaining what you all have done and some of your financing options and, you know, it's one of the, they're afraid of what they don't know. And so I think that study's going to be interesting, but how does this play not only in Thornton funding, but school construction funding?
Because construction's important.
Exactly right. Yeah, well, how it ties in and all of these, the problem is there's no funding source. There's no direct funding source. So I think that there is some hesitation about how quickly they're going to jump into these formulas. Will they, will they patch some things? Will they delay some things till they can get a better vision? And realistically, a new administration can put their fingerprints on what they want to do. So you had a challenge already with where are we going for these funding formulas? Everybody, you know, wants the Baltimore city funding for school construction. Everybody wants to mess with MOE and man, look out, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you, Chairman Nixon and Subcommittee Chairman Kaiser, ooh, don't go there, you know? And so, there's a, there's a real struggle and a real battle coming about, how do we do those? And then you throw some negative numbers into it, and it's the perfect storm for, you know, what are we going to do? I think, and I think we'll demand, your presence with Mabe, with the other presence that we should, and especially, I'm going to tell you, Senator Edwards is the key there, that we have a voice on the finance and appropriations or the budget and tax people to speak to the needs for the rawls, not to be forgotten in that. But I think it's going to be a very challenging, not only fiscally, but all these other moving parts, that people are going to line up for what they didn't think they got in Thornton the first phase and try to get it again.
And if the pie's not any larger, and certain counties get a bigger percentage, then that's where the equity issue.
Yeah, I know, I'd say to you all too, you know, some of the analysts are saying, you know, what we really need to do to fix our structural budget deficit is a one-year flat funding. All right, now, that, I know that's problems, because you guys have automatic formula issues. I don't know if that would ever happen, but that's a conversation. What if, instead of growing, our spending by four or 5 percent in a year, what if we just took one year and flat leveled? It probably would catch things up.
Education was almost flat funded.
Yeah, well, that's true, yeah.
It was.
So, it wouldn't be a big adjustment for you all, right? But across some of the other areas.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Delegate Sarafini, we have been fortunate the past couple of years with the disparity grant. Do you see that going away in the near future?
Thank you for that question. You know, there's a lot of different disparity, Mr. Bailey, there's different ones, right? There's the one we're used to that's economic-based and are you drawing? And as we, as you all know, we hope to never qualify for it. We hope to get ourselves so fiscally sound that we don't need it. But the reality is, I do see there are really serious adjustments to that, right? The disparity. And, but there's pension disparity that's already paid to some of the counties so that they wouldn't, you know, they were going to talk about net taxable this year too, I hope you know. That was one of the first initial ones, and that would have cost us big time. So, I think all of those. I think net taxable could be put back on the table, especially with fiscal.
Because that's phased in, so we're only in year two.
Exactly. Yeah, we're not there yet, exactly. And I do think disparity, and my greatest concern is the attitude that we're trying to fight against is, if your local is not taxing their citizens to the max, right? If we're not hitting our piggyback as high as possible, if our, you know, Homestead tax credit doesn't allow for the largest increase, why should we help you? I can tell you, I'm not an economist, but I've listened to enough of them, and Art of Van Bassu is going to be in town tomorrow, and he would tell you the same thing. If you're in an economically depressed area, the last thing you should be doing is raising your taxes and making things worse. Look at Baltimore City. Why are they losing so much population to the county? We're sitting here on this border. We start taxing people to the max on their real estate and items, they're just going to go. It's going to exacerbate the problem. So, I think disparity, you know, is well-done, it's agnostic, it tries to really step back and look at the real numbers and say, "We have a reason." Those that complain about it don't realize that we're one of the few states that have local taxes, right? You know, they call it wealth redistribution. That's Anna Rundle that only gets 20 cents back on the dollar, and, and Mont Germain that gets 17. We get 53. We're above the state average. But the reality is, in most other places, the locals don't have that kind of tax. It's all distributed at the state, and it's wealth redistributed there. So, it's a moot argument, if you really understand it, but it's an argument that's coming. And once again, we're going to have to fight to say, number one, help us get out of this, number one, and number two, in the interim, let's be fair, whether it's us, or whether it's Cecil County, or Wycomico, or Baltimore City, we need to help our neighbors. We are part of Maryland, and so, but I think disparity is going to have some challenges because, once again, get past the election and now look out, you know, if they're going to do tough stuff, it could come early.
Thank you, sir.
Are there other questions? Any sense on what's going to happen with the post-Labor Day start?
Oh, gosh.
Just quickly.
Yeah.
I get a lot of questions about that.
Yeah. I'm sorry, because I've come here before and thought I had a good pulse on things. I just don't see that happening. I just think there's too much opposition. You know, I know this, you're the educators, you're in charge of it, you should choose what you want to do. Will they let it go regional? You know, will those in the areas do it? But, you know, what are you going to do? Honestly, if we push you back, then you're going to go later, right? Your finish date's going to be pushed back, so that cuts into the vacations and all the stuff that they're arguing for. So, you know, you guys only have so much time to get so much done, and we're expecting more and more of you all the time. And then we're going to turn around and say, "But you can't do it then." I don't see, I don't see support for that. Maybe regionally? It's an argument that could be made, but same, you know, the one that worries me too, the start time in the morning.
The sleep.
Yeah, the sleep issue. Right. You know? I understand the physiological issues, but, you know, my parents said, "Go to bed." Had a reasonable hour. If you're dragging, you know, maybe you needed to get more. So, I, that's the one that scares me. How do you do that? If you start all your schools at nine in the morning, how do you, how do you bus those?
Think about busing.
Need a lot more buses.
Yeah.
They're going to fund the buses for us, the drivers.
I don't think so. Right, yeah, that's right. I'm concerned about how much more drops on you all in the county. That's the trend that really worries me, and we have to push back.
Thank you, Delegate Sarafini. Thank you for your partnership this year. It was a two-way street, and I know we all appreciate the ability to pick up the phone and speak with you and get your take on what's happening in Annapolis, and to know that you know what we think means a lot to us. So, thank you for that, and I know there's a lot of things that go on outside the session that are going to impact what happens next year, so please, let's stay in touch throughout the summer and the fall, so we can hit the ground running next year.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. That brings us to old business. The first item is the consideration of the second read of proposed policy GBEE, employee use of social media.
Good evening. On May the 6th, the Board of Education approved the first reading of this new proposed policy during its business meeting. Since the first reading, the policy committee conducted a public work session on May the 7th. Additionally, a public notice was placed on board docs, and members of the public were invited to offer comments. No comments were received. We are requesting the board's approval of the second reading of policy GBEE at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed policy GBEE entitled Employee Use of Social Media.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Williams, seconded by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion? Just want to make sure everybody's ready to vote. Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of approval of policy GBEE? Are there any opposed? The motion passes six to one, and the student member concurs with the majority.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the first item under new business, which is the consent agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. The consent agenda, there are seven procurement action items for your consideration this evening. I'm going to quickly give a little summary of each, and then turn the meeting back over to you, Dr. Hardings. The first bid on the agenda is for food products and distribution. Washington County Public Schools was the lead agency for a master agreement on behalf of itself and U.S. Communities Government Purchasing Alliance members. This includes state, local government, school districts, and higher education institutions across the country. We had a pre-bid meeting here at the Education Center on March 5th. Proposals were received on April 1st. Three companies submitted proposals. Premier Foods, with U.S. Foods as their distributor, U.S. Foods, and Red Gold. This bid is recommended to be awarded in its entirety to Premier Foods. Prices were received for one, two, or three service tiers, either local, regional, or national distribution. Pricing in the market basket that's attached to the recommendation is the cost of the products. The delivery fees are the cost per case schedule fees that are also included in the report. Prices for the delivery fees are firm, based on the option that the client, the school districts would select from the schedule of fees, and the prices in that market basket can change at any time, but overall, at the end of a year, they're verified to not to have exceeded the rate of inflation, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. The contract will be effective upon board approval through May 30th of 2017. It may be extended by mutual agreement of the parties for two additional one-year periods for a maximum contract term of five years. The Procurement Review Committee is recommending that the contract be awarded to Premier, using U.S. Foods as their distributor, and based on their national pricing, service response, and their ability to provide food product supplies and service to the school districts and other government agencies who belong to the U.S. Communities. The second item on the agenda is RFP 2014-69 for athletic training services. Staff solicited and received proposals for athletic training services for the seven high schools in the county. Proposals were received on May 5th, and two companies submitted proposals. The requirements for qualification to service this contract were provided in the board report, so I won't reiterate those, other than to say that the training serv, the trainers must be licensed through the Maryland Board of Physicians. The performance period will be June 3rd for the evaluation, protocols, and planning activities. The trainer services will begin, trainers will begin working with schools and students starting August 1st. The contract is eligible for renewal from August 1 of 2015 through July 31 of 2016, and subsequently for up to three additional years for a maximum contract period of five years. The contract will provide one athletic trainer at each of the high schools for 40 hours per week, over 39 weeks during the regular school year, and for 10 hours per week over 10 summer weeks during summer break. The Procurement Review Committee discussed this proposal in its recent meeting, and is recommending the proposal by Maryland Sports Care and Rehab of Towson, Maryland, be accepted for providing these services at our high schools at a cost of $34,860 annually for a total contract of $244,020. Third item on the agenda is bid 2014-66 to construct ADA accessibility upgrades at Smithsburg High School. We received bids from four companies. The project will make the exterior ramp connecting the main entrance to the south technology education wing of the building ADA-compliant. Also, the project will make the locker room area ADA-compliant. The project is partially funded by the state and did have a minority business participation goal of 8 percent. We won't be able to be achieving that, but the bidder did meet the standards for the granting of a waiver of the MBE Bowl. This work will be performed over the summer, with most of the work substantially complete by August 1st. The Procurement Review Committee discussed the bid and recommends award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, GRC General Contractor. The fourth item on consent is requisition 170070. A requisition that was recently submitted to the purchasing office for additional IBM servers to accommodate the purchase of a data warehouse system for the storing and managing of student data. The PRC recommends approval of the requisition to Tmall Place Group at a total cost of $48,939. Item five on the agenda. Staff is requesting to update the current software program used by the school media centers to access resources there. Currently, students and teachers must search multiple locations to access the system's print, electronic, video, database, and other online resources. This purchase will provide for Destiny, Follett Libraries' Destiny Library Manager, which would allow our schools to consolidate searching and accessing these resources into one web-based portal. Again, the Procurement Review Committee has approved this purchase at a cost of $106,344.50 annually. For the second year, the cost would be $44,240, and probably something similar in subsequent Item six. Wilson Language Learning Materials. We have 35 total requisitions that were submitted to the purchasing office. The request is to purchase Wilson Language Foundation's teacher and student learning materials in support of the reading, the foundational reading skills defined in the Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards of the Washington County Public Schools curriculum. There's some explanation in the board report about the transitioning and expansion of this foundation's program. For your information, the grand total of these 35 requisitions is $214,734.43. It's a sole-source purchase and not really subject to competition or bidding. The final item on the consent agenda is to purchase the renewal of a software license for the Lawson Human Services, Human Resources and Payroll software packages that we're currently using. The term of the software renewal is through May 31 of 2015, and that order totals $96,953.56. And my understanding is that is also a sole source. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I would like to move with a expanded motion so that the record-keeping may reflect the exact motion. So, I will read the motion.
Terrific.
I'm moving to approve the national bid for K-12 food and distribution to Premier at bid price, prices, accept the proposal for the athletic training services for seven high schools by Maryland Sports Care and Rehab at $244,020 a year. ADA upgrades at Smithsburg High School to GRC General Contractor at $161,066. IBM servers to Tampa Palace Group at $48,939. Library automation system by Follett School Solutions at $106,344.50. Requisitions to Wilson's Language Training for Foundation's Program Materials at $214,734.43. And to purchase Lawson Human Resources software renewal for Info U.S. at $96,953.56. I'd like to move for adoption, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Ridenhour. Is there any discussion, any questions from Ms. Freeman? Mr. Ridenhour?
Just very quickly with the athletic trainer. I'm sorry, Lisa, I'll also here real quickly, but the athletic trainer, the company that is going to take or provide that service, they will be responsible for the hiring and retention of the athletic trainers for each school. The school will have no say in who, there'll just be someone to be provided.
That's correct.
Correct.
They will be the contractor.
Okay.
I spoke to them earlier today. They're very enthusiastic. They have a lot of great candidates, and they are looking forward to performing this contract for us.
I'm not disputing it. Trust me, that has nothing to do with, you know, my question or my concern. My only concern is that, you know, that company does not know each individual school as well as, you know...
as well as, you know, some of our people on site might know. So that's why I was a little bit concerned about who was going to make the appointments, where, when, how, whatever. So, okay.
I understand.
Superintendent, that's a similar arrangement we have with Meredith for our nursing program.
That's correct.
Very similar to that.
Very similar.
And that has been successful, I believe.
It has been successful. And I think the Meredith situation is a good example. When we have a situation where there's a personal kind of interaction issue, Meredith's, because of their larger interest in the overall contract, is quick to respond to us. We think it'll be a similar situation here if we get an athletic trainer who doesn't mess with either the administration or our coaching staff as well. Mrs. Wabes?
Yes, I had two questions with regard to the athletic trainers. I know we have budgeted money for the cost of the trainers for the contract, but I'm seeing here that there are training supplies that would be our responsibility for providing as well. Do we have that money included in the budget to, and do we have any idea of what that might run annually?
We have resources within the budget. One of the things you'll notice is that the budget came in significantly lower for the trainers than we actually had budgets. We have resources, but we want to sit down with the company and see what they actually need. The other thing we have to do is take a careful inventory of the facilities that we are having these trainers serve at, because many of the locations already have some of the things that we'll need, like training tables and things like that.
Great. My second question was with regard to, it says that the contract is annual, it would be renewed annually, and I'm just wondering, is that a calendar year? Is that the school year? How, what does that?
At the cusp of the term.
Like the August 1st through July 1st, I read somewhere. Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, it would be from August 1st. So the decision to renew would probably be brought before the board, maybe at the end of June.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Green, did you have a question?
Yeah, about the servers and the requisition. What exactly is the type of student data that will be held on them? I'm just curious about that. Is that like student accounts, or is that like information about students?
I think it's demographic data, the school you attend, who your teachers are, and the same information that's collected in the Synergy software program.
I was just looking at one of our folks. I think it's also our, some of the scores and other information that we're keeping.
So it's just like temporary storage before it's sent off to wherever it needs to go?
Well, no, it's, well, we may extract files and send them, place like the Department of Education, but we will have those files reside here as well.
Okay.
For historical data.
It's our data analysis tool as well. So we'll, you know, dump test scores in there and be able to do a series of data analysis regarding information, attendance, test scores, as well as other sources that we have here within the system. Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I'm glad to see the Wilson Foundation's language program in here. I happened to serve on the curriculum committee. We had a demonstration of that, and it was, actually, it was a delightful program. It was really interesting. I think it's something that's really going to help our children with literacy. Glad to see it.
Mrs. Breitman?
A couple of questions, one on the Lawson Human Resources software renewal. I noticed our next item up is going to be a purchase of a human resources and financial information system. Simple question, how does Lawson align with that? I'm sure, assuming it does, and is this a $96,000 item that we would have to continue, or is this the end of Lawson at this point until we come on board with the other?
As you just described, it's the end of the Lawson system. It'll take us one year, is my understanding, to kind of get up and get rolling with the components that we currently have with the Lawson system, with the new system. So we need to maintain that for the remainder of this year, for the entire upcoming school year.
Sort of as a redundancy, it'll be running side by side with the new system? It won't really be aligning then?
And I think you'll have more of that information during the software presentation. But there'll be a lot of storyboarding and, you know, a lot of background work that's got to occur before the software's up and running. It'll almost be a year until the software's implemented. So we need one more year with Lawson. So next year, we'll work with Lawson to continue data reporting, collection of teacher information, and stuff like that.
As we transition. Okay. On the Foundation of Reading Software, is it Software Program? I've been told for most of my time on the board that we needed multiple programs for multiple, for the way children learn, and is this program going to handle all of those different needs developmentally and the way people learn, students learn? Or are we still going to have some duplication of reading methods or programs?
I don't think it's intended to be our sole source of all interventions and things. I don't know if defer to Dr. Wilcox or Mr. Semler, but it's a significant portion for K-1 and 2. Maybe Mr. Semler or Dr. Wilcox want to comment?
First of all, the Foundation's program is primarily a set of resources that young people use to learn decoding skills, early reading skills, phonemic awareness, some basic phonics decoding skills. It is also an opportunity to provide our teachers with some background and development in terms of teaching these specific skills, because oftentimes, these skills are not skills that are taught traditionally at colleges and universities anymore with any great depth. So it's an opportunity for young people to experience language from a very foundational level. It will not replace everything that we do, but it will become kind of the way that we as a system begin to develop young readers.
So we could, in theory, maybe eliminate some programs over time and move to this, or you think we'll always need?
Well, I'm not really sure that, there's a piece of me that says I don't really look at this as a program. I look at this as just kind of a fundamental set of teaching skills for our primary-based educators. There isn't a software program that will eliminate, or we won't get rid of a reading series to do this.
Okay.
I think part of what Ms. Breitman is asking about has to do with learning styles and from what demonstration we had. This is tactile, visual, auditorial, auditory, and it's not software. It's unit, yeah. Unit?
Individuos.
Yes. And it was just, Carol Sager demonstrated it, and she was just terrific. I can't see why a child wouldn't have funding this, therefore fundamentals title. Great.
Thank you.
I just have one on the trainers as well. I guess what surprised me about the bids that came back was the price. $21 an hour is our cost to the vendor per hour, right? So that's, that's got to be a fully loaded hourly rate. So if the salary is, you know, if overhead and benefits, just social security is, takes, you know, six and a half, well, seven and a half if you include Medicare off the top of there, I'm surprised you can get trainers for $17 an hour, $16 an hour. I mean, I know they say they can do it, and if we award the contract, they're going to have to do it.
And he's, I did, I did speak with the company today, and I think, my understanding is they're really aggressively growing their business. They're moving regionally. They picked up Howard County, and they picked up Frederick County, not to the same extent. They don't do all the high schools, but they have a few high schools in those counties. And they're, they're very much strategically attempted to secure the contract.
Okay. I certainly don't know what the marketplace looks like for trainers. I know it's a specialized skill, so it was surprising to me that they can get the employees they need to do this work at that price point, but I guess we'll find out.
Eric and I made a call together, and we were both really pleased with the approach and their attitude toward the provision of supplies, and made comments along the lines that they're flexible about the type, the budgets on the supplies, and they are understanding if one school has additional supplies over another. They're actually going to supply their athletic trainers with a Chromebook, so there's no requirement for the school system to buy them laptops. They'll have their own software. So I think it's a big business that, a business that caters to some of the large professional institutions in the area, and is just moving into the school market.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, the questions on Mr. Bailey's motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. With the consent of the board, I'm going to ask if we can adjust one of the items on the agenda here to move the first item under the superintendent's report to next. We have some guests who are here to be recognized, and my hope is that perhaps we could do that recognition next rather than make them wait through all of the new business items. There's no objection from any members? Okay, that'll take us to the superintendent's report. Part one. So it's my great pleasure to ask Mr. Klein to come forward. He is the CEO of Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Washington County, Maryland, and he has a presentation that he would like to make relative to Bowl for Kids' Sake, the 2014 fundraiser. Tom, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me time on your agenda tonight. This was really important to us, to have the opportunity to come and recognize the great participation that we had from some of your colleagues in Washington County Public Schools. I'd like to say good evening to Dr. Hardings, Dr. Wilcox, and the esteemed members of the Board of Education. I appreciated some of the conversations here this evening, and I'd have been happy to have sat there longer. So, thank you.
You're welcome to stay after you're finished with your comments.
Each year for the last 30 years, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Washington County has conducted the Bowl for Kids' Sake fundraiser. It has by far been our largest and most successful fundraiser, and it's become a very significant staple in allowing us to continue to operate. This was our 30th annual Bowl for Kids' Sake. It was an important year, and our partnership with Washington County Public Schools has really been a wonderful one. We have partnered with Washington County Public Schools formerly since 2002, providing site-based mentoring in 11 elementary and middle schools in Washington County Public Schools. As we were planning this year, we, as we've done in years past, we've reached out to our partner schools and asked if they would be willing to participate in the form, in the form of recruiting teams to come and participate that day. How it works, the bowlers go out and they, they secure donations from friends, families, family members, colleagues, and so on, and they come and bowl that day and make that donation to the agency for us to be able to continue to do the work that we do. We had a very successful year this year, and a very significant part of that success was our partnership with Washington County Public Schools. The, the total raised for the fundraiser this year was $39,500, which is the most that we've raised since 2008, which is a glimmer of hope for us that, that we're progressing and we are forming new partnerships as much as we can to be able to continue to grow and continue to serve kids. Of that 39,5, about $18,000 was the donations that were raised by, by the bowlers, and the 12 schools that participated this year raised over $5,000 of that 18,000, which is absolutely wonderful and, and really is why I'm here tonight, because I feel very strongly that these schools should be commended for their participation and leadership. Had the opportunity, as we were gearing up for this Bowl for Kids' Sake, to meet with the principals and, in some cases, the assistant principals at each of these schools, and each of them, you know, while very busy with their, you know, with doing what they do, we're more than, more than happy to, through their leadership, recruit some of their staff who might have an interest in helping us. So we did have 12 schools participate, and I would like to, if I, if I can, just, I want to read the name of each of those schools. I think it's important for them to be recognized. Lincolnshire Elementary School, E. Russell Hicks, Western Heights Middle, Ruth Ann Monroe, Salem Avenue, Boonsboro Middle, Morgansville Elementary, Hickory Elementary, the North High Baseball Team, Fountaindale Elementary, and Bestor Elementary. And of course, the main reason that I'm here tonight is there was another school that, that participated that we had kind of a fun competition this year to see, you know, which school could raise the most money. And it was, it was a close finish, kind of a photo, a photo finish for three of the schools, but the winner of this year's challenge is Pangborn Elementary School. And at this time, I'd like to ask Eric Meredith to come forward, and I'd like to present him with this trophy. Eric, I had an opportunity to meet with him in February, and, you know, again, you know, very busy, a lot of students with, with many needs, a lot on his plate, but he said, you know, "We, we value our partnership with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and, and we will do what we can." His leadership resulted in actually five teams participating from Pangborn Elementary School, which was absolutely wonderful. They raised a total of $1,025, which we greatly appreciate. Yeah, let me, and, yeah, I would like to, if I could, recognize the team captains as well. Jennifer Barlop, Lauren Kearns-Hahn, Audrey Pepple, who's here with us this evening, Jill Waters, and Lauren Wharton.
Thank you. It's a big trophy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tom, thank you for what you do for our kids and the community as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, just as follow-up, our new vision statements up there, and I think this is, this is what building a community looks like. And thank you and all the nonprofits who work with us, but in particular for the service that you provide to our kids. And the more we can do to be partners with the people who help us, I think it's only better for, for Washington County and for all of our kids. So thank you, Tom. That brings us back to the second item under new business, which is consideration of the financial and HRIS software and services.
Good evening again. We have a procurement action before the board. WCPS Purchasing Office solicited and received proposals for the selection of a system-wide financial and human resources management information system. The system will integrate internal and external management of information across the school system, including finance, accounting, budgeting, purchasing, human resources, payroll, and asset inventory. The system will automate this activity with an integrated software application and facilitate the information flow between all business functions inside the school system. The RFP was issued way back in November of 2013. A pre-bid meeting was held in December of 2013. We had five companies who attended that meeting. We received proposals from six firms on February 6th of 2014. I've provided you with the names of those six companies in the report. We had a very thorough and participation of staff in the evaluation committee, including the Chief Financial Officer, the Director of Human Resources, the Director of Information Management and Instructional Technology, and many other folks. Management and Instructional Technology, and many other folks. The criteria that was used to evaluate the proposals included the experience and background of the offerer, the software itself, the technical architecture of the software, experience with public sector clients, and many other features that were looked at by the committee. Three companies were invited and made full-day presentations of their proposals to the evaluation committee in March. The evaluation committee sent a subgroup to visit two school districts and see the software in use in those locations, which was a very valuable exercise in trying to evaluate the fine differences among these software products. The Procurement Review Committee discussed the recommendation in its recent meeting and is recommending that the board accept the proposal by Tyler Technologies for its Munis software at a five-year total price of $2,663,355.49. The Munis software is used in over 700 schools across the United States. It's used in Manassas City Public Schools. It's used in cities and counties in Maryland, including Wacomico County, Cecil County, Talbot County, and others. Munis was the highest rated technically by the evaluation committee and it had certain unique features and capabilities that made it a standout among the companies that submitted proposals. That said, I'm going to defer to the folks at the table here if they want to add any comments regarding the software, the Munis software itself. If not, I have some prepared features that I'd be happy to share with the board regarding its strengths as a, as a selection for the, from the committee.
I would just say that we spent a tremendous amount of time reviewing the bids, querying the, the representatives from the companies, viewing the demonstrations, and after we had narrowed it down to two finalists, which were Munis by Tyler Technologies and E. Finance by SunGuard, it was unanimous decision, or unanimous recommendation, excuse me, of the, of the selection committee to recommend the Tyler Munis system to the Board of Education this evening.
I can add something if you would like me to. My staff was involved from the beginning with reviewing proposals, viewing demonstrations, visiting the schools, talking to references, and from the beginning and throughout the process, HR staff were very much in favor of Munis for a lot of reasons, which I see Lisa has highlighted and will go over with you, but we just feel like above all, the customer service experience that we're going to get from this implementation is going to be very important as we move. This is a huge transition, so that's going to be really important and the depth that this package allows us to look at our data, drill down without too much effort. It's all in one place and that's really important for us.
I would say that as we started this process, the two finalists seemed to be pretty much running along a parallel path and they were, they were, there was very little differentiation between the two of them, but as we moved down the path of selection and speaking with other users of the software, it became very clear that the two were, were, were two divergent, taking two divergent paths and, and we were much more satisfied with what we were seeing from the Tyler Munis software than what we were seeing from the other package that was, that was being proposed.
Some of the unique features about the Munis over the second finalist company are that each user has a personalized dashboard that allows him or her to immediately see all the functionality that is needed. So the ability to simplify the tools on a per-employee basis is provided there. It allows, has a scanning system built into the product, into the software, so you can scan and retain documents with the electronic records that are important to those records. It has excellent position control functionality and provides many, many abilities to sort and, and make decisions relative to the different positions and pay scales within the HR package. Tyler has a strong partnership with Microsoft. The software provides the ability to easily upload and download to and from Excel and PDF files. Very important, one of the strengths is definitely the workflow system. That was one of the real objectives of the solicitation was to have the ability to electronically route financial documents for approval within the software system. Tyler Technologies has a very well-defined and very sophisticated workflow process that would provide us with the flexibility that's required. That said, we felt that the Munis system was the software system that was going to meet the school system's short as well as long-term requirements for managing our financial data and providing information to the board and superintendent that we, it's necessary for making decisions moving forward as you all are required to do.
I would just go back and point out that, that a lot of the differences that we saw was a result of the software development philosophy used by these two companies. The, the Tyler Technologies provides a software that will allow its customer to build a system-specific software that will, that will meet the specific needs of the system, whereas the SunGuard system that was our second choice was a system that's, is a, is a product that's built on what they call best practices. Now, I think we all understand what best practices are, but their best practices are defined pretty much by, by them and their experience over a period of time. They take those best practices and build them into the software and it's a pretty rigid software system that can't be, you can't, you can't modify it very much from what they consider best practices. If their best practices are a little bit different from what we consider best practices, we don't, we would not have the ability with that software to, to make that, to make that, that differentiation. Some of the other things that we saw were that with the SunGuard system, we would have had one individual assigned to us as a, as an implementation coordinator, if you will. That person would have been sort of a jack-of-all-trades, would have, would have, would have been responsible for the implementation of all of the various modules, everything from, from HR...
To accounts receivable.
To accounts receivable, to accounts payable, to payroll. So that, that is not what we, that's not what we would, we would be getting if we go with the, with the Tyler Technologies. They would provide a team and each member of that team would have expertise in each of the modules. So we might be seeing one person for payroll, one person for, for onboarding, one person for workflow, et cetera, et cetera. The Tyler also, the report-writing capabilities are much more user-friendly. They use Crystal Reports, Report Writers, which we have several people in our, in our building right now who are very familiar with that. They also have a very, very good feature in that they have a report-writing team in Maine at their corporate offices and as long as a report does not take any longer than two hours for them to develop, it's free as part of our annual maintenance fee. They said very few reports have they ever been asked to write that have taken them longer than two hours to write. So essentially, any report needs that we would have, that we wouldn't be able to, to work through here, they would be able to do that for us virtually at no cost. A lot of other...
Chris, can I make a comment about that?
Sure.
Because I think a lot of people might think that that means that anytime we want to access data, we've got to contact a company in Maine. But what that really means is, is that if we have state reporting requirements where we have to take an exported file and put it into a very specific file structure, they're going to help us with that. But the export ability to take just general ledger information or other important information and just dump it to Excel or some other kind of software device that we can manipulate outside is automatic and really instantaneous for us. So it's, it is not, for those people who are sitting at home listening, every time we want to pull data out of it, that we have to get somebody in Maine as a report writer.
Absolutely not. I'm speaking now specifically of special reports that we would need. The, the real differentiation, however, and the red flags started to fly as we moved into the, into this individual functionalities. I think Lisa mentioned position control. Position control is very important to the, to the way we want to be doing business as we move forward. We want to be able to identify every specific position within our school system and tie it to a specific account code. That would be somewhat difficult with the, with the product that we are, are not recommending. It would be very easy with the, with the Tyler Munis system. Workers' compensation, there is not a workers' compensation package as part of the product we're not recommending. The Munis system does have a workers' compensation package that includes capabilities for such things as first reports of injury, logs, and that sort of thing. And we could go on and on and on, but at this point, I think it probably would be...
Let's turn it to the board.
Would be best to turn it to the board and let them ask any questions that they have.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the proposal for RFP number 2014-44, Financial and Human Resources Management Information System to Tyler Technologies at $2,663,355.49.
Is there a second? Second. Motion by Mrs. Breitman, second by Mr. Reidenhour. Are there any questions or discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
Just a quick one underneath the box at the bottom. It says $60,000 for year one maintenance, includes disaster recovery service and OSDBA services. I think the OS is on-site. What's DVA?
OSDBA is Operating System Database Administration. It is a, it is a consulting package to our IT department that will be heavily utilized during the, during the implementation phase and the salesman told us that it's very possible that our IT staff may decide after we get through the implementation that they don't need that, that product again. We have included it, however, to be conservative.
Then if, if that's included each year and if they don't need it, does that mean the price for the successive years might come down?
It would knock the price down by about $30,000 a year. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mrs. Breit?
Thank you. What really struck me from your comments was the idea that this system, we could make it specific to our needs and I think that's huge because sometimes we don't know what we don't know until we get into it. What is the expansion capability of this software? I mean, are we looking, it's going to be relevant 10 years, 12 years, 15? I mean, how, or can we update it? I mean, is this something that will grow with us?
I think this is something that, I think you hit the nail on the head. This is something that will grow with us, whether this particular version that we're, that we will be installing will be the version that we'll see eight, 10, 12 years out. I could, I couldn't fathom a guess because I really don't, don't know what kinds of, of reporting requirements and so forth may come, come down the pike at us. However, I do believe that it is scalable and it will, we can continue to, we will be able to continue to use this system far into the future.
Couple specific questions. You mentioned in the, the lead-up to this about asset inventory. How do you see that working differently than what we already do? I know there's, I've heard some concerns about tracking all the various devices, some people having multiple devices and then somebody not having access to one and, I mean, how do we track? Is this going to allow us to handle that tracking better?
We believe it's, it's going to be, make it easier to track items that are not included in the, in the, in other words, items that are, that are tagged but are not included as part of the, the fixed asset group, but items that we tag because they may be easily misappropriated, for example, tablets and that sort of thing.
That's because we've put a lot of money into devices and we'll continue to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's important to get a handle on that. Just one specific, I know in HR recently, there's this 11-year issue where we, calendar issue where we go from 26-week pay to 27-week. Will this sort of take the guesswork out of that and the headache out of that?
It, it may make it easier to manage, but it will not make it go away.
Does it make the calendar go?
Because there's no way you're going to be, to be able to, there's still no way you're going to be able to divide 365 days by a 14-day pay period.
Just thought maybe the machine, it's something a little more exciting than what we have come up with.
I wish, I wish I could say that it's going to make it go away. I think it will make it easier to manage, though.
Okay. And a final question, and maybe this is the wrong place for this, but I'm going to ask anyway, just to be sure I understand. Is there any capability in this system as far as setting up triggers for risk management issues? It's sort of on that same idea as the inventory control. Are there certain things that we, we know from a management standpoint that this is a, an area of concern or can we set those triggers up and help us track any of that?
The one thing I do remember from one of the demos is that there's a way to check whether a certificate of insurance is on file for contractor, so you can help to monitor...
So that would flag...
Yeah, that will help flag that and help to make sure that we, we always have contractors have active coverages when they're working in our buildings. One risk management advantage of it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Go ahead.
No, I was just, you expect this to be online in a year from start?
We specified a 15-month implementation period.
Fifteen months, okay.
This, this implementation for the Tyler Munis will, will be a little bit longer than what it would have been for the, for the SunGuard E. Finance. SunGuard E. Finance, because it uses that, that best practices model, only has about 5,000 decision points. The Tyler Munis has about 20,000. So it will, it will take us a little bit longer to set it up, but as Lisa mentioned, we're...
20,000 decision points?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a good thing the board's not voting on that tonight. I'm sorry.
But as Lisa mentioned, we do, we do have a 15-month implementation built into the, into the RFP.
And I think ultimately, all those decision points are going to give us a much better return on investment because it's going to be a much more thorough implementation and the ability to storyboard things out and plan workflow that we know this is what we want this process to look like, I think, is a benefit, even though it takes a little bit longer.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? I'd like to compliment the staff for approaching this decision as a 10-to-20-year decision, not a two-to-three-year or a one-year budget decision, although this is within the budget that we've established for this product. Similar to our discussion on the Educational Facilities Plan this morning, these, these decisions, I think, are made with a 10-to-20-year mindset towards the impact that it's going to have on your organization and any business would take the cost of this software, amortize it over its useful life, and look at that in terms of, of the value you get. And I appreciate staff being forward-thinking and trying to find something that when we're all gone, including probably some of you who are retired or have moved on, that we're going to still have a product that's going to serve the needs of the system. And as we move towards accountability and integrated systems where we want to be able to link student performance with dollars... where we want to be able to link student performance with dollars spent, with HR questions, I think this is the kind of tool that we need. So I'm happy to support it, and I thank you for being forward-thinking and bringing this particular choice forward to us.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, the question's on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the software. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
That brings us to the third, I guess, item 3A under New Business, which is the first reading of policy, BCH Consultants to the Board. Did you get it?
I don't think so. I think he's under there.
He is. He's mushed.
He bothered me.
What did he do to you?
Good evening, Dr. Harding's Board members, Dr. Wilcox. The Policy Committee has conducted a comprehensive review of Section B of the Policy Manual, which is entitled Board Governance of Operations. As a result of the Policy Committee's review of Policy BCH, which is entitled Consultants to the Board, the Committee is recommending that this policy be rescinded. The Policy Committee is basing this recommendation on the guidance provided by Policy BG on Policy Setting. Since the Board of Education has the authority to retain consultants as needed, there is no need for a policy on this subject.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move for the rescission of Policy BCH Consultants to the Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of Mrs. Fisher's motion to rescind, for the, to approve the first read to rescind the policy? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs. That brings us to item 3B, BHB, Board Member Development Opportunities.
The members of the Policy Committee conducted a discussion during their most recent work session regarding Policy BHB, which is entitled Board Member Development Opportunities. The Policy Committee is recommending that this policy be streamlined and that it be reformatted in accordance with Policy BG. The policy is being presented for a first read at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Marco. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that Policy BH, uh, BHB, Board Member Development Opportunities be approved on first read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, seconded by Mrs. Williams. Is there any discussion?
We certainly made it very colorful, but I'm unfinished.
Any?
Just, um, when I look at BHB and I look at our recent Policy BG on Policy Setting, and I look at the definition of policy as a written document which establishes the principles for the implementation of educational programs and the management and operation of the school system and a course of action for the county school system, I don't believe that this rises to that definition of policy. So I, I continue to have problem with this at, at that level. I think it's a, a best practice, possibly another opportunity to collect some of our best practices and, and codify those, but I don't see this as a policy.
Any other discussion?
I'll repeat what I said in the Policy Committee, which is that I, I have the same basic view as Mrs. Brightman. I don't, I don't think this needs to be a policy. And I think through our, through our budgeting process, we have a mechanism to, every year, have a discussion about Board Member Development Opportunities and the costs associated with it. So I, I don't support having a policy, so I won't support the motion.
Just a quick question. Is there any other way to codify this sort of thing? Because I feel like we all recognize that it's important to have that Board Member Development. But is there any other way besides either having a policy or just having it in the budget that we can find kind of middle ground for that?
I would say there's probably several different ways we could approach that, and that's something as a board that I think we need to have that conversation. And I think this helps remind us that we need a place to maybe collect our best practices. So it's a good question. I don't know what the answer is specifically. It would take, I think, an initiative of the board to do that.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, the question's on Mrs. Fish, Fisher's, excuse me, motion to approve the first read of Policy BHB. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion fails. Two in favor, five opposed, and the student member opposed.
Mr. President, excuse me. At this time, I'd like to move. We're back to basically the drawing board where we were a while back, but I, I would like to move to rescind Policy BHB at this time.
In its original?
In its original form, since we, the motion to approve the new policy, it reverts back to the original policy. My motion is to rescind the original policy.
Mr. Reidenhour makes a motion to rescind the original policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any discussion? I hear no, hear no discussion. So the question is on Mr. Reidenhour's motion to rescind, to approve the first read to rescind Policy BHB. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes five to two, and the student member concurs with the majority. That brings us to, is there no more motions? The, that brings us to item 3C, I guess, for lack of a better term. Consideration of, of Policy BHE, Personal Liability Insurance.
Thank you. Good evening. Policy BHE requires the Board of Education to purchase insurance coverage to protect its employees and agents from legal claims that might be asserted against them during the course of the performance of their, their duties and responsibilities. During the Policy Committee's work session conducted on May 7th, the members of the, of the Policy Committee were briefed on four Maryland laws that cover the same subject matter as that is, that is covered by BHE. Maryland law is very clear that a Board of Education has an obligation to purchase liability coverage or to participate in a, in a risk pool to protect its employees against legal claims that might be asserted when an employee is acting within the scope of his or her duties and responsibilities. In light of that information, the Policy Committee is recommending that this policy be rescinded. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move the Policy BHE, Personal Liability Insurance, be rescinded on first read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, second by Mr. Bailey, to rescind Policy BHE. Is there any discussion? I'd just say for the benefit of my colleagues and to reinforce what Mr. Trotta said, we had a lengthy discussion about this one in the Policy Committee just to really make sure that we'd scrubbed the law and made sure that the policy doesn't require us to do anything that the law doesn't require us to do in the first place. There's no discussion. All those in favor of Mrs. Fisher's motion? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next item in the agenda is consideration of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, pass-through grant. Mr. Gladhill.
Good evening. We would like to request approval of the fiscal year 2015 local application for federal funds. We just had a couple of slides to show the three-year history of this grant. It's a little bit less than 4.8 million for FY15. There was about 100,000 last, last year, and a little bit more than 4.8 million in FY13. At this point, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd like to request approval for the local application.
Thank you, Mr. Gladhill. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the FY15 IDEA, Part B, pass-through grant.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Brightman, seconded by Mr. Reidenhour. Is there any discussion?
You sure?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, there's some federal chatter about actually funding IDEA above, I think it's a 40% level of full funding at this point. Are you hearing anything about more money becoming available and how might that translate into the, a?
Through the state of Maryland, no. We've been having meetings with the State Department, and they're not really anticipating it actually returning to free sequestration lavers in the future. It's probably going to stay about where it's at because we've actually had an increase of about 34 students from last year, and we have a little bit of a deficit, deficit from the previous year. So I'm not really anticipating any major growth, at least in the next few years.
Even with the, um, what is it, the Affordable Care Act with the Medicaid expansion? I'd read an article that that was going to possibly add more money to the IDEA. That's Title I, so Medicaid is something we, would you see that bringing more money in?
We have not heard any word on that, of them changing any of our reimbursement through Medicaid. It's something I hope we get in the future, but it's nothing.
It's supposed to capture more children, so that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
I don't know if Dr. Wilcox.
There is, there is the possibility, if it does capture more children, that we would be able to get more resources based on reimbursements, but we'd also have more expense in, in earning that reimbursement, so.
As a percentage of?
Particularly if it's physical therapy or occupational therapy, things like that.
Yeah, speech and language service coordination is how we get most of our reimbursement, but that's based on the numbers of our students that we have eligible. And nothing's been, I was actually just at a Medicaid meeting on Monday at the State Department, and they didn't say anything about rates changing or it expanding at that point.
And the fact is, our, our labor costs for those kinds of things, I don't want to say are, are astronomical, but they're very high. So the reimbursement rates oftentimes don't even cover the cost of the services for young people.
Okay, thank you. Thought there might be some good news somewhere.
Well, the good news is there's 4.5 million dollars.
Well, yeah.
It could have been less.
Could be a lot worse.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, the question's on Mrs. Brightman's motion to approve the pass-through grant. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladhill.
I think it's important for our community to know, I, I didn't mean to be flip, Mrs. Brightman, because quite honestly, you, you've made really a, a great point. The fact that if we can expand the revenues to provide better services to kids, we certainly want to do that. And, you know, we, we spend a great deal of time and energy, you know, chasing revenue in this particular program. The fact is that IDEA has never been fully funded. It's only been funded at about 18 or 19% on a 40% promise. But even if it were funded fully at 40%, that means the local districts would be bearing about 60% of the cost for educating special needs students. So this is a tremendous cost to us if we provide the services to young people. But, um, you know, this district, I think, through Jeff's leadership and through that of Dr. Marco, is firmly committed to serving the kids that are perhaps struggling the most within our community. And those are those kids with special needs and different abilities. So, so thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Mike.
That brings us to the superintendent report. Dr. Wilcox?
Well, thank you. Um, Rich, could I ask you to put the charts up, even though I'd said not to, so I can stay right here, and then perhaps we can get a tight shot of them? It's a, really an exciting moment for me to begin to have a more public conversation about the possible creation of a downtown academic hub that would allow us to provide greater services to our kids across this community. Many of you are very familiar with the fine work that's been going on at the Washington County Technical High School with creating boutique learning environments, meaning that young people who want to further their education are engaged in their passions. They are working in auto tech repair, they're working in biotechnology, they're working in cosmetology, they're working in all kinds of areas that excite them and perhaps provide some rationale for some of the more routine academic studies. We've also had, I think, really encouraging news about what can happen to young people when they chase their passion in the arts. The Barbara Ingram School for the Fine Arts Downtown has pointed out that engaged kids do nearly better in all aspects of their life. Academic, social, emotional, just about every aspect. And we found that kids going to school in a downtown environment actually adds some vitality to the downtown. So conceptually, this has kind of solidified some thinking that's been going on among board members and in the larger community that we can create some more nuanced boutique learning opportunities for our kids that make sense. To that end, we want to create greater capacity for other students to experience education immersed in their area of interest. It goes to the board's vision statement about creating communities that are looking at inspiring curiosity, creativity, and achievement. So if we truly want to capitalize on what kids are passionate about and develop their foundational education and deepen their understandings in math and science and languages and a host of other academic endeavors endeavors, we've got to do some things differently. That said, over a year ago, I began talking with some folks downtown about the possible creation of an academic hub, a place where we could create expanded opportunities for young people. We began talking to Mr. Bowman, who at the time was interested in purchasing the building adjacent to the Barbara Ingram Center and also adjacent on the other side to the Maryland Theater. And over the last year, perhaps even a little bit longer, we've outlined it, outlined not just what we needed in terms of academic spaces, but we tried to further our interest in partnership by dreaming a little bit for the Maryland Theater. Now, I want to be very clear that we've not talked to the Maryland Theater about our dream, but we have talked to a number of community stakeholders. We have talked to a number of folks who experience the theater on a regular basis. And they said, you know, if the theater just had this, the partnership between you and them might be even deeper. So today, we want to offer our look into some work that we've been working on. This is a vision to create an academic hub, which will allow us to grow our footprint downtown and create opportunities for young people. I want to be clear that, again, that this is our plan, and we'll walk you through it in just a moment. Some of you are taking looks at parts of it right now. But I, I want to also say that we are looking at building an entirely new facility on the Bowman property with elevations matched to the theater. This would allow for a possible expansion and movement and partnership with the theater at some point in the near future. The building that we're looking at creating would have 14 classroom spaces, which would include wet lab spaces. For the first time, our students at the Barbara Ingram Center, but also at some of these other boutique programs, would have the opportunity to take classes that have high-end biology spaces, high-end chemistry spaces, and places where they can truly prepare for a 21st century education beyond the typical high school experience. This facility was all, would also have great technology as a centerpiece. It would have great spaces for teachers to work in. It would also allow us to have cafeteria and kitchen spaces on-site. We believe that we could also build a facility that had set construction spaces and ample storage space with really a tremendous new office area as well, so that we could better serve our larger community. The model that we're going to take a careful look at in just a moment would have about 50,000 square feet and cost a little over $13 million, we believe slightly south of $14 million. You know, it's interesting, when you start to throw numbers around like that, people begin to get a little bit crazy. But I want to say that, you know, don't be tempted to look at this as a cost in isolation. It might be more appropriate to see it in a broader, brighter light. When we talk about relocating program spaces to our downtown academic hub and creating smaller boutique facilities or internships, we are actually thinking about deferring the cost of a fully comprehensive high school that might cost anywhere in the neighborhood of 75 to 100 million dollars. So this invest- So, this investment of, you know, perhaps 13 to 15 million dollars would do a lot as to either eliminate the need for or push the cost far off into the future when perhaps the economic circumstance in this community is significantly better. We also believe that as we move into this, these smaller learning spaces for our young people will just provide a better education, a more engaged education. I'd like to speak to just a couple of other things before I actually walk through the diagram with our community and with the board members. This is not something new to this board or to this community, this creation of more boutique learning spaces. If you really think about this process, we've been talking about things like this for quite some time. You know, last year, we created the virtual learning space at Western Heights. We have talked a lot about internships within this building. We built classroom spaces in this building so that we can bring over kids to work, not just in print and production, but perhaps in the culinary arts. We've talked about bringing kids over here to work in computer arts. So, it is not a new conversation to any of us. It is, I think, an extension of that. We've also talked about relocating some programs to 701 North Frederick, which was our old physical plant facilities building. We think that there we could create perhaps a public service academy where young people could be engaged in police, policing curriculum, as well as perhaps fire and safety prevention curriculums. We've also talked about adding the dimension of dispatch to that facility. So, again, it is not a new conversation to us, but it is one that I think further bears great study and perhaps this new location. I'd also like to point out that we have worked slowly. As I mentioned, this has been the better part of a year in conversation, and we've been very methodical to get to the point that we are today. We have talked to the county commissioners and the staff. We've worked with the city consul and the mayor and with the city administrator. And while we don't have any specific commitments from those bodies, I think it's fair to say that they have shared some great enthusiasm for this project. And I believe each body understands what it will take to do this. I think each body understands that this really is a three-legged stool in terms of the governmental agencies, that the city, the county, and we as a local school system all have to contribute to this, not just in terms of our intellectual capital and our ability to drive change in the community, but financially as well. One of the folks that I mentioned, spoke to recently, also said, you know, there is an opportunity here for some public-private partnership beyond the developer to interact with this. There's an opportunity for the foundation at Barbara Ingram. There's an opportunity for our district foundation to participate, and there is an opportunity for civic-minded individuals to participate in this project. So, without any other conversation by me, I'd like to just walk you through this facility. Board members, if you'll just pay attention to the screens, these diagrams are not new to you, but to our community members, I'd like to show kind of what our dream looks like. And so, I'm going to begin at this drawing. Board members, what you'll see here are three parts. The gray section is Bispa. The middle section, with kind of the peach color, is the new building. And then, the yellowish-colored material or terracotta-colored material is the Maryland Theater. So, the ground floor, you can see the parking, or excuse me, the plaza in front, and then you see under the theater that's unexcavated. And for any of you who have actually spent time in the theater, you see on the ground floor, kind of in the back alley entrance, the performers' preparation spaces, which really, I think, already need some repair. But, again, I won't comment on the theater beyond kind of citing the location here. If you come up to the ground level, what we have done is we have matched up, again, the gray section, which is the current Bispa station, and we've taken a look at the salmon-colored area as our first floor. You can see we've created lobby and administration reception areas. We've created small group areas and a parent partnership room where the parents of the students who attend this downtown academic hub can come for community-based meetings to talk about the education of their young people, but also to come together to talk about how they can support the school. Behind that area are dining facilities and a serving area, a small kitchen. This would not be a full kitchen, but rather a satellite kitchen where food would be brought in and then assembled and prepared for our young people. Behind that, you have loading spaces and workspaces. And if I can, for just one moment, I will move back over to the theater. And what we did is we matched our elevations to the theater so that if the theater chose to put on an addition in the plaza, there would be great lobby spaces, opportunities for new restrooms, offices, ticketing rooms. We just thought it would be very, very exciting to show what could happen there. If we then move on to the second floor of the facility and take a look at ours, we have classroom spaces, computer lab spaces. And one of the things that I want to point out to the board and others is that in most of these classroom spaces, because this is a four-story facility, what we have is lots of opportunity on the backside of the building for daylighting, to make these classrooms come alive for kids. And any of you who have been on the backside of the current Bispa, you know that's a very attractive side of the building right now. Again, we've stacked on top of those classroom spaces, when we go to the third floor of our proposed addition, additional classrooms, again, some space for expansion of classrooms. And then, we have some teacher workspaces and, again, some classroom spaces that are on the front side of the building. Once again, if I just walk over to the theater on either the second floor or the third floor, opportunities for a community engagement process. I could see, for example, a possibility of a community agency renting space from the theater, giving them a dedicated revenue stream. You could see like the MSO in there, you could see some other group that use the theater on a regular basis. You could also see some practice areas, studio spaces, that perhaps the school district would rent from the Maryland Theater in this building to complement the classroom spaces that we're getting. And again, not to speak for the theater, but to say there is a great opportunity for partnership here, if we all put our heads together and think carefully about this. Finally, when you get to the fourth floor of this, we have additional classroom spaces, some more expansive spaces. And here on this floor, I think some brilliantly thought-out science lab with lots of daylighting. So, we're very excited about what this building could offer downtown. 14 new classroom spaces for kids. It would allow us to put additional 150 to 200 kids downtown. These young people could be attending some of these boutique centers that we've talked about, or they could be possibly an expanded Bispa. So, board members, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to talk to you about them more. But what we really are looking for is kind of some head nods from our board right now to continue on this process of trying to engage partners so that we can actually move forward with this process.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Is there discussion from board members? Justin, you want the first crack at this one?
Sure. I'll just say, I'm just sad that I won't be in Bispa if this actually happens, because that looks like an excellent plan. I mean, especially speaking to the sciences, we are not able to have AP Chemistry right now because we don't have the lab facilities for that, which, as a nerd, I really, that really hurt me, that I could not take AP Chemistry. And we had a lot of difficulty even with AP Biology, so that would be excellent thing for Barbara Ingram and for any other students I wanted to take advantage of building. I mean, I have plenty of other comments, but if you guys want to go ahead, that's fine.
Mr. Reidenau?
I'd rather hear him first, and then I've got plenty of time. Things I've said before, Justin, please.
Another, another, I guess this is more of a question, just like from the security aspect, would we be able to do direct transfer between like Bispa building...
Yes.
This middle building and then the Maryland Theater even, perhaps if they go along with that?
There would be direct transfer on several of the floors between the Bispa current facility and the new facility, because we would be matching elevations with the Maryland Theater. We may not be able to have direct access on every floor, but one of the things that we are looking at for the elevator, if you will, would be what is the possibility of having it stop at different elevations and simply having two doors, one into the theater portion, one into the Barbara Ingram. So, perhaps even if the floor elevations are off 30 or 40 inches, which I don't think would be that great a difference, I think it'd probably be more like 12 to 18, maybe 24 inches. But in the main part of the building away from the elevator, there are opportunities to ramp it, to put stairwells in it, and some other ways to go between the buildings.
Well, I know there is an alleyway in between.
There is an alleyway, and what we're thinking about, the alleyway is actually owned, I believe, by the theater. And so, one of the things that we're talking about with the developer is, is there a way to bridge that alleyway so that the alleyway is open to the theater to have emergency egress from the theater as there is now, so people could come out that way? And then, what we would do is essentially bridge the alleyway and come right up. We would be a freestanding building, however, so we would come over and, but directly up to the theater, if in fact, the theater wants to play with this, in this endeavor. And I recognize that it's a dream and it's a stretch for them, but, you know, I don't think that we can bridle our enthusiasm because another organization hasn't yet gotten to that place. Perhaps we can be the inspiration that will move the community to help them.
I mean, I've still got more, but you guys can go ahead.
Okay, and thank you, Justin. I think, you know, I've been on this board since the inception of the Barbara Ingram School, and I think all of these ideas, as we have discussed them as we've gone along, the ideas of the boutique schools, the ideas of the hub, using reutilization of Frederick Street and other areas, you know, they make perfect sense. A comprehensive high school is an incredibly expensive, you know, endeavor. And, you know, if we can push it out 10, 15 years, and we've done that, we said when we built Bispa that one of the things that we felt we could do, and we were able to do that, Boyd would remember, was delay the need by moving 150, 200, 250 kids out of our high schools in the county and opened this smaller boutique-type school. So, we've been able to do that. The other thing we have to take into consideration 10, 15 years from now, the delivery of education is going to change again. I mean, it's changed so much in just the last 10 years that who knows what it will be like in 10 years. We may not need a comprehensive high school. This may be the model that we're looking at. I think it makes perfect sense. I'm excited about it. And one of the things that excites me is the fact that kids are going to have an opportunity to do what they want to do, something that touches them. We've seen it at Barbara Ingram. I think probably the greatest example is the fact that the school has been so successful, not only musically and artistically, but academically. You know, their performance is as good or better than any school in the county, you know, they're a gold medal school, whatever the case might be. But, you know, they've done that without having to, without really, in their admissions process, looking at academic potential. The kids that come in there are auditioned on artistic ability. You know, their academics have no, they're moot. They're not even a part of the audition or a part of the entrance criteria. So, the reason in my mind that that occurs is the fact that those kids are excited, they're engaged, they recognize that the two elements of the school go together. And I think that will be the case, you know, in our service academy, I think that will be the case in moving some of the programs, maybe, that are at Tech High right now into the downtown hub, allowing kids more opportunities to practice their craft while they're still in high school. So, I'm excited about this. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's going to benefit us in the long run, save us a lot of money and save the county money. So, I'm hopeful we can, we're able to pull this little hat rabbit out of the hat and get it done.
Well, to emphasize your point and to move away from the conversation around Barbara Ingram, which I think we all know has been academically successful, as well as successful in its performance, you know, it was the fifth highest rated school according to Newsweek ratings, which, again, we don't put great stock into, but I think it is a validation of some of the effort there. It was the fifth highest rated school in Maryland. Of the top 2,000 schools in the United States, it ranked, I believe, in the 175th or 171st.
171st.
171st. So, you know, that's a pretty powerful testament to the quality of academics going on there. But, you know, I would choose to look right now at Washington County Technical High School. You know, when we have a lot of folks who are talking to us about school perhaps not being a safe place, I know that, you know, Mr. Stolfer prides himself in the fact that not only have they not had any expulsions from that school during his tenure, he can't remember the last time there was any kind of altercation between students. There hasn't been a fight. It's a very safe environment. And again, each year, you see really dozens of kids coming here who are participating in national competitions in a wide variety of topics, whether it's automotive repair, whether it's culinary arts, whether it's electronics, whether it's video production. Kids who are engaged in kind of their passions simply do better in school, so...
And I would just like to comment on that briefly with Washington County Technical High School. That school has evolved to where it is today over a period of years, and it has been finely tuned and to the point now where the applications to attend there exceed the capacity. And I mean by a substantial margin. We, I spoke with the criminal justice instructor just recently, and he said he wished he had space for 45 more candidates because there were hundreds of applications that had to be denied. So, I think the, what we're doing certainly has a purpose in meeting individual needs of kids, things that they want to do and will be motivated to do, plus the fact that although we have not had extensive dialogue with the city and the county, they have indicated an interest and have kind of said, proceed, let's get this thing, let's get a picture of what we want to do there. And that's, to me, is very encouraging.
Mrs. Bright?
I think there's always been a lot of natural synergy between student learning and urban environment, and I think this would present an expanded opportunity, as Dr. Wilcox had said, for culinary, cosmetology, maybe hospitality, IT. I see it as a possibility for apprenticeships with local businesses. And apprenticeships, I think, are something we need to bring back to the forefront of college and career mindset. So, I think there's a great opportunity to expand those career opportunities and experience. And that's the visionary part of this, which is great. And then, I think as a board, we need to look at the reality. And the reality is a couple of things. One, the existing facility there, we need classroom space, we need a lunchroom space, we need more comprehensive academic space for AP classes and so forth. So, we've got to think that, what do we do with that school if we don't expand? And to that, Dr. Wilcox, maybe you could speak a little bit more about the 14 classrooms and that that takes care of the existing enrollment at Bispa, but where would that give us as enrollment projections for the new facility?
One of the things that I should mention, we have a number of great partners already downtown. We use Space at the Bridge of Life. That's where we have our kids have their cafeteria space. We also have some classroom space there. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we actually teach a class in that cafeteria space sometime during the course of...
French class.
French class during the course of the day. In addition to that, we have the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown space where we, right now, you have nine classrooms under contract. We typically use eight during the day. One of the classrooms was dedicated for special education services, which we're not using fully right now. But I, so, this would net us up substantial classroom space, particularly when you view it against the University of Maryland's system's success, which is putting us in a difficult position. Meeting with their executive director, Mark Holsey, recently, he said that they're going to probably, most likely, expand their nursing program, which would force us into a position of only being able to have six classrooms on a regular basis. Six classrooms will not allow us to deliver the programs and services for our young people. And in fact, we'd have to reduce the number of kids at Barbara Ingram alone in order to get their academics in. So, you know, directly to your question, we believe that if we add this space, we continue to work with community partners, we can up the total number of kids downtown by about another 200 to 230 young people. by about another 200 to 230 young people. We think with this space. Again, there's a lot of work that has to go into that, but that's kind of the target right now, is how can we add a couple hundred kids to the downtown environment where they have these opportunities to work in local businesses some part-time, take classes downtown, chase their passions.
And also in reality, and I know we're not prepared tonight to talk about any financing in a specific way, but just broadly, I know in our master plan we talked about this morning, the education facility master plan, there would be no state funding at this point for this. So the partnership and the local support is really critical to this.
That's correct. The current CIP, as it's constituted, does not generate funds for us because these are not new seats. We'll be taking kids from existing seats, bringing them here. But quite honestly, that's one of those things that helps us to put off this comprehensive new high school even further because we're going to reduce some of the overcrowding in some of our high schools. When we're looking at overcrowding right now, we're looking at South High, which is overcapacity, and North High, which is overcapacity. If we can attract more kids from those environments, then we can better serve kids at both North and South. So I think this move makes sense from a lot of different directions. It helps, again, to reduce overcrowding at some of our schools. It helps to get kids more engaged, provides broader opportunities.
And just on the money, and then I'll pass it on, but I think it's important to also state that with Bispa and that financing, the state did come in with four years or three years?
I think it was three years initially, but they came with a fourth year.
They came with a fourth year. So they did wind up, and that was, what, 634,000 a year? So they put in some nice money there, even though it was backfunded, so.
As has been mentioned before, we have talked to the city about participating financially. We've talked to the city about the need for adequate parking downtown as well, at a board member's request. We've talked to them about a number of other things that would be important for us from the city's perspective. We've also had that very same conversation with the county. And I will tell the board that I've also had some preliminary conversations with Dr. Lever at the request of the board president and vice president to ask him to come to town to talk to us about alternative financing and perhaps revisit some of the things that were done in the early days of construction so that we can make sure that we explore all avenues of financing so that we're responsible to this community.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I've got a few more. Well, just first of all, just as an example of what Dr. Wilcox was talking about with classroom space, I mean, right now, we have a literary arts program at Bispa, but they don't have a floor in the Bispa building because we only have four floors, so they just kind of take their classes where they can get them. And so having a new building like this provides them with an opportunity to have their own space where they can do their own creative things. And, I mean, going along with that, that's, literary arts program is a new program that was introduced after the school was created. So I guess I see what Dr. Wilcox is talking about, adding new arts programs, new technical programs, like maybe computer science programs in there, and just wherever students' passions lie. So I just see that as positive all around. Let's see here, what else? Oh, yes. Also, I think that having more students downtown will really help revitalize the downtown area. I mean, I've been working with our principal to try and convince him to let at least seniors take their lunch outside of the school building at a restaurant downtown. It's been an interesting process-
How's that working for you?
-to convince him, but he is going to allow us to, for the first time, not this Friday, but the next Friday. So that's an exciting achievement for the students to not-
Yeah, you're making notes, Dr. Wilcox.
I am making notes!
I've talked about this with Dr. Wilcox.
He did, actually. I actually encourage it. I think it's a great opportunity for our young people to demonstrate how responsible they can be. I think it's a great opportunity to really take advantage of an urban environment.
Because, I mean, there are a lot of studies that have shown that in more densely packed urban environments, creativity does increase, and so does productivity and all sorts of other positive factors, so.
Other comments?
There is one other item, Mr. President, which you can attest to, that, you know, we always said right at the beginning, but that as University of Maryland filled up, we recognized right from the start that there was always the possibility that we were going to end up being booted. So this was something that was all, has been on our radar for some time. The other thing that, you know, having a classroom space right in the same building, basically, for all intents and purposes, it's going to save and allow us to get 15 to 20 minutes more instruction a day.
Oh, more than that.
Is it more than that?
Yeah, I would say that I probably spend at least half an hour walking every day.
Yeah, 10 to 15 minutes going back and forth.
It's a good exercise program, I guess, but.
We'll figure a different exercise.
My brief five minutes of recess in between each class.
But, you know, that's an extra half hour of instruction time that we don't have right now, and I'm certain that the academic side of the, of the school would be, you know, for real.
Not to mention the headache of walking students everywhere-
Right.
-and the amount of manpower that that takes, both from our teachers and from the downtown police force.
Who have been very cooperative, incredibly cooperative in that.
Any other comments?
I had a few of my own. I'll try not to repeat anything that others have said because I agree with pretty much, pretty much all of it. Certainly to emphasize that the state construction model for funding is really not set up for this kind of project, and I think that's why we're in a position where we have to be creative in how we finance it, and we've been creative before. I trust that we can be creative again. Two other things that I'd just like to focus on is, less the Barbara Ingram aspect of this, to me, what this is trying to do is to provide an experience for other kids that is like the experience that kids at Barbara Ingram have. So I think of Barbara Ingram, and I'll extend this to other kids in a moment, but they've got two places they spend time. One is traditional academic classroom, but a lot of the instruction they receive is can't, just can't take place in a traditional classroom. That's what the Barbara Ingram School building structure is, is to provide the physical space so that they can have that other kind of instruction. And I think of this project as a real catalyst to help provide that kind of experience for many, many other students, whether it's the Public Service Academy students, or culinary arts, or whoever, who knows what the programs are that that will be. And I think our willingness to embrace that concept really is an endorsement of the success of the Barbara Ingram School because we're going to try to model many other programs based on its success. So that's what excites me about it, and it also excites me that that ties in so well with our new vision, which is creating these communities of learners in unique environments where they really will thrive. So I'm very excited about the concept. In fact, I look forward to the Barbara Ingram students interacting with kids who might be in the Public Service Academy or with kids who are in culinary arts. That's exciting to me, too. So I think it's a super idea. I wholeheartedly support it, and, I mean, it's true that I think it would be a shot in the arm for downtown, but that's not why I support it. That's a side benefit. I think, I support it because I think it's a great thing to do for kids. And if it helps downtown, too, that's fantastic as well. But I want all of our high school students to have the enthusiasm that somebody like Jessen has about his program and how he experiences school every day. And if you start up adding the other opportunities we have for kids, between the Barbara Ingram School with the capacity of 150 students, this facility, which would be 200, 200-plus, we've got a middle college now that probably have 60 students within a year or two when it's fully filled, probably space for 40 to 60 students in this building, Public Service Academy that could have so many students. You start adding up how many students we've created space for, and with this project, I think we'd be well over 500, probably over 600 seats for students that didn't exist before the Barbara Ingram School. That's a good bit of a way to a new high school. So it doesn't mean we'll never have to build a comprehensive high school in Washington County, but I think funding this facility in a way that reflects our vision and the experiences we want for kids, it makes sense on a financial level and it makes sense in an instructional level.
So, Dr. Hardy, just two other comments that I have, and then a conclusion. The first one is, if we are successful in building the momentum around creating the academic hub, then there, a logical piece of that is creating some spaces downtown like the Barbara Ingram Center in terms of storefronts where kids can meet before they go to their internships. So there is that opportunity for further development and the further expansion of our footprint downtown as an education services provider, which is consistent with the mission of arts and education downtown. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say once again that the only way this happens is if all of the local governmental agencies come to the table and bring not just their time and their energy, but their treasure. We have to have the city participate financially in a significant way. We have to have the county participate in a significant way, as will we. And we have to make some space available for some of the private philanthropists in this town, including our own foundations, to contribute to this effort on behalf of kids. Now, those contributions may all be different and maybe of different scale, but we have to have everyone come together in order to make this dream a reality. So, you know, given the board's comments, we're going to work hard to secure those partnerships. We are working now to talk about the financials and talk about some of the construction documents that will take place. We're going to continue to have the conversation with the state funders to see if there's not some way for them to play, as Mrs. Brightman mentioned. And again, we hope to create some very positive momentum that will take us right through summer and perhaps as early as September, October, have everybody on board so that we can actually take some construction documents out in December of this year and perhaps break ground in the 2014 year.
Fantastic.
Maybe 15, but 14 would be great.
Are there any other comments?
Tight timeline.
Just real quickly-
Boyd's very aggressive.
...what you were saying about the, and Boyd and the, our facility staff would know, one of the reasons that the state got involved is they were impressed with the model that we put together. One of the, Dr. Lever, they wanted at some point to be a part of this because it was the first time anyone had done something like this. And I think if we can get that same type of energy, I think particularly Dr. Lever, he likes creativity, and he would be, I think, in many ways, very amenable to trying to help us, just as he did before.
Ms. Wright, now, I do know this. I sent him an email last Monday morning, I think about 9:00, and by 10:30, he had said, yes, he'd gladly come to Washington County, and he's having his secretary work with Ms. Steiner to arrange a date.
Great, great. All right.
We will then-
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. We'll then move on to personnel action.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, so that we can see Debbie again.
As discussed or includes session earlier today, I'm bringing personnel recommendations forward for your consideration.
Is there a motion to approve personnel actions recommended by staff?
So moved, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wright now, or second by Mrs. Brightman. Is there any conversation, discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor of the personnel actions? Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero, and the student member abstains.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Marco. That brings us to board member committee reports. Mr. Grinndike, do you have anything from student government?
No.
Mrs. Harshman, curriculum?
We have not met on curriculum and instruction since the last board meeting, but we will be meeting May 27th in the board conference room at 11:15, and the agenda will be posted prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, finance?
Yes, the finance committee will be meeting on Tuesday, May 27th, at 3:30 in the finance conference room, and the agenda will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher, policy review and development?
Policy met on May the 7th. Besides reviewing the policies that we dealt with earlier this evening, we discussed policy BFAA attorney involvement, and Mrs. Williams is working on revising that for our next meeting. Also, policy JK, advertising in schools. Staff at this time is revising and working on that. And BJ, school board memberships, which I have already revised and am bringing to the next meeting. And that next meeting is May 27th at 1:45 in the boardroom.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey, facilities?
We have not met since I last reported on our April meeting. I have in my hand the agenda for our meeting on May the 27th, to be held in this facility at 8:45 a.m.
Thank you. Mr. Wright now, resources?
The HR committee will meet next Tuesday at 10:00, I believe it is, or 10:00, right after facilities. I believe we will be in the board conference room.
Thank you. Anything from MAB committees? Board directors or otherwise?
No report from MAB.
Okay. That brings us to miscellaneous business. The first item is establishment of an ad hoc committee on new board member and board candidate orientation, as we've been discussing for a couple of months, bringing forth the recommendation to create a committee called the Ad hoc Committee on Orientation, whose members will be Mrs. Brightman serving as the chair, Mr. Bailey, and myself. And I'll just read the charge so everybody hears it. The charge is, "The Ad hoc Committee on Orientation will review past practice and make recommendations for board candidate and new board member orientations. Recommendations may include policy changes, orientation structure, state or national models, timing, topic, staff involvement, outside organization participation, facilitators, or any other orientation-related topic that the committee consider appropriate. Recommendations for any policy changes will be made by August 31st, 2014, to provide sufficient time for the board to consider any changes before the annual reorganizational meeting. And the term, the committee will dissolve on November 30th, 2014, unless extended by prior action of the board." I picked that date because it's right before the board reorganizes, anyway. So I will ask if there's a motion to approve that charge, the creation of the committee and the membership?
Mr. President, I move for acceptance of the ad hoc committee as laid out this evening.
Motion by Mrs. Fisher, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright now. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Harshman?
I was wondering if Mrs. Williams could be added to the membership. I know that she is the last person to enter the board, who also did not receive much orientation, and I think that since she is the most recent added to the board, that she would be able to provide information that might be helpful to what may have been helpful for her.
Is there any other discussion?
Does that create a problem with four members of the board? It does. It's voting form.
Would be making policy.
I have no interest in serving the committee, so I'd be happy to provide any kind of input, but-
We're certainly interested, I think, to vote.
From everyone.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Before we vote, I would just like to ask Dr. Wilcox if he considers appointing a staff liaison who can help provide staff's point of view. That's not something the board appoint, the board doesn't appoint liaisons, but we'd like to ask you if you would on behalf of-
Absolutely. I would do that. I'd be very interested myself, but let me think about it, talk with the team, and then I'll respond to you.
Very well. If there's no further discussion, the question is on Mrs. Fisher's motion to create the committee. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion passes six to one with one abstention. I'm sorry, Mrs. Harshman, did you abstain or not?
No, I will vote in favor.
The motion passes seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Yes.
Future agenda items, there are a few things I'd like the opportunity to speak with the board about. First is, we typically start in June with going to two daytime meetings and not having the second meeting of the month be an evening- the second meeting of the month be an evening meeting. That's my intention to do that unless the board wants to provide me any other direction. I've talked with Dr. Wilcox about it, and he says staff can support us either way. If there's no, no strong feeling, we'll go ahead and proceed in that way.
I think it's helpful for staff to do that.
Second is, we typically only have one meeting in July. Last year, I went and looked up the agenda, and it was really long in July. So I'm thinking of having two meetings in July. We'll try to keep one of them short, but I think it's important so that we can get contracts approved and procurement, et cetera. So my intention is to have two meetings in July, that's just for the information of all members. We'll follow the same schedule, which is first and third Tuesdays of the month. That puts it on July 1st and July 15th.
It's helpful for policy as well.
Right. And the final item, we had talked about having board advisory committees report to the board on some sort of basis, the facilities enrollment committee, the safe schools advisory committee, the health committee, family life, et cetera. In sort of brainstorming this, Mrs. Brightman and I had talked about perhaps having a quarterly report from one of those committees to the board. There are about 12 of them. That way, every four years, each committee would report once, so then every board member's term, there would be one report from each of the advisory committees at least. We could do it more frequently, we could do it every other month. I sort of don't want to do it every single meeting because I think that asks an awful lot of staff. But that's what we're thinking, but I'm glad to take any guidance from, from the board on how we approach that. For now, we'll go ahead and start scheduling them, perhaps on a, once every three-month basis. And if members have other direction they'd like to provide, please, please do so.
And I think the advisory committees, if they feel a need to reach out to us, they have a liaison, staff liaison, and they can always approach us that they have a specific need to, to give a report, so it wouldn't preclude them from doing that as well.
Okay.
Could we perhaps see a list of all the committees?
Sure.
Some time. Not, not only right now.
We could be sure, we could be sure to get it for you. Sure. I think it's in a policy somewhere.
See how long we can get. So we have a list there.
Yeah, you're right.
Right here on the agenda.
Yeah.
Or- You're welcome to keep that if you want.
Okay.
There's 12 or 13, yeah.
12 or so.
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, for instance, this one, reports more.
Exactly, so.
Some of these report more often anyway and perhaps would not be on the regular rotation.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. By request, they can come to us and ask.
Okay. If, that's all I have for future agenda items, we'll go to board member comments. Mr. Grinndike?
Nothing.
Mrs. Harshman?
Nothing.
Mrs. Williams?
I'd just like to say that I had the opportunity to attend a MAB boardmanship session on Friday, May 16th, and the topic was cultural competence, and we heard some folks from Montgomery County speak about partnership that the school system has with the local educational association, and the focuses with, the focus is on culturally responsive teaching. It was very interesting. They have a partnership with McDaniel College, and they have a five-course certificate program, and they've had three cohorts go through. So it was a very interesting session, and it was interesting to note that Talbot County does something similar. They have something called beyond diversity training. So I brought some information back, and I'd like to share it with you, Dr. Wilcox, if you would find that of interest. It was a great opportunity, so I thank the board for that.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brightman?
Just maybe a suggestion, back to our earlier conversation about Brian Poffenberger, we were unable to be there individually or collectively as a board tonight at his farewell, going away event from the chamber. Maybe it would be something, a letter of appreciation from the board, and we all sign on, just thanking him for his leadership and partner, partnering with us over the years with the school system during his tenure, might be appropriate to do, so I would, if everyone's in agreement, maybe we could put that together.
I think that's a great idea. You can draft something, circulate it, write it this week. Mrs. Fisher?
Just, I've attended just a couple of the elementary school end-of-the-year showcase activities, and I've been overwhelmed with the attendance. I mean, parking has become a real problem at the schools, just because there's so many people that, grandparents as well as parents that want to come in, and the schools are doing a tremendous job of showcasing what the students have learned and the exciting things that are happening, especially in schools that have specialized programs. So it's very interesting.
Mr. Bailey?
I have many contacts with people who enjoyed their ability to come here and tour the building.
Tour.
The overwhelming response was, that I've been in contact with, with former employees who call it the PE building. I told them we'd call it something else, and they said, well, we're still amazed with the way it has been renovated and the generosity and the kindness with which they were received. So we're very pleased to hear that kind of feedback.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Nothing.
This time. I don't have anything either, so we've reached the end of the agenda. I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thank you all.